Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, September 5th, 2018 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and so I'd like to invite Chantel Westbrook from Calm Care to come and talk a little bit about Calm Care and services provided.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come this morning and just kind of bring out the Suicide Prevention Month that is going on all of the month of September. With it being the second-leading cause of death in youth and the 10th-leading cause of death among those over age 35, it's really on the minds of all of us, and we all have an interest in learning more about this and raising that awareness and getting our message out. We might educate ourselves on warning signs. We want to be available when others need us. We want to know what is all available in our community. We're going to watch a short video here in just a moment. I did want to mention that September 10th is National Suicide Prevention Day. We'll have volunteers handing out bookmarks that give some information about suicide prevention, and those bookmarks will be handed out at many various locations by a lot of different volunteers. And so as a way to just kind of spread the message more, for example, the Tag Office, the Health Department, the Zoo, the Courthouse, will all have volunteers handing out bookmarks. Also on September 15th, Out of the Darkness, there'll be a walk down at the Hyatt Downtown that will be sponsored by the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention that will also be an opportunity to raise that awareness, and anybody's welcome to participate in that. There's a website and a link to register. And then we also will have a lot of different billboards and ads around the community that the Suicide Coalition is sponsoring that just to, again, raise that awareness and bring our attention to this issue. And then the video that we're going to watch here in a moment will be on our Facebook page and our Twitter page so that others can see it as well. And then I also will just kind of end my remarks by just saying our Calm Care community Crisis Center is available 24/7 as it always is, and we want to make sure everyone in the community is aware of that resource. So we'll watch a short video.
Every 12 minutes, someone in the U.S. dies from suicide. It's the 10th-leading cause of death in America, killing more than 44,000 people each year. Truth is, most people thinking about suicide don't actually want to die, but need help staying alive.
When I felt suicidal, I came to the Community Crisis Center.
A 24-hour resource center for mental health assistance and suicide prevention.
Where I spoke with a therapist and discussed my feelings.
By providing face-to-face interaction.
It was determined I'd be admitted to the Crisis Observation Unit.
For crisis treatment planning.
To work with a case manager to come up with a plan to ensure my safety.
Clinical staff are ready to help.
They are always friendly and supportive.
Going above and beyond.
To help me if I begin having increased urges to hurt myself.
With the encouragement and support from the Community Crisis Center.
I am currently 323 days self-harm free.
Educating yourself and others on the warning signs can play a crucial role in saving someone else's life. If you or someone you know is contemplating suicide, take it seriously and get help. Call the Community Crisis Center today at 316-660-7500.
And I will just wrap it up today, Commissioners. Your regular and fire meetings will consist of considering minutes from past meetings, a proclamation declaring National Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week, an island annexation for the city of Derby, two grants for Calm Care, a quarterly Interest Bank Arena Report, a review of bid board items, and a number of items on your consent agenda. So with that Chairman, I will hand the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you Kate, I appreciate it very much. And thank you for the information about suicide prevention. Our Calm Care folks do a tremendous number of things for our community. They are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. It's not just suicide prevention, but if we have people in crisis for any reason, make sure that we have that available and that people are able to use it. I appreciate what you're doing for us. I want to welcome everyone that's entering the audience today. I want to welcome all the folks that are watching us online. Also, we have one of our county managers, Kathy Sexton, in the audience today. I want to recognize her, and I'm sure she'll be speaking here later on on our annexation. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for September 5th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Jeff Letterer, Central Christian Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
If you would, bow your heads with me. Father, we come before you and are just amazed that we, as broken vessels, could approach such a holy God. More than anything, we come, we want to exalt your name, but we also want to ask for your help. We want to ask for your help to do the things that we and our human efforts can't accomplish. And there are so many things that we could mention as we lift our praises and our prayers and our petitions for aid to you, but Lord, I want to praise you instructed, and Father, I pray that your words would be powerful in this place. And so simply just the Lord's Prayer, Lord. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Though we love you, trust you, ask for your help, would you bless this meeting, get wisdom, and provide what only you can? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Ranza.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Thank you. I have one individual signed up to speak on public agenda today, Mr. Charles Peaster. Please approach the podium. You have three minutes, sir.
Good morning Commissioners, and most of you know me. My name's Charles Peaster, and I live at 9453 North 135th Street West. Maybe what some of you don't know is I happen to be a precinct committeeman for that Eagle Precinct. This year, for the first time, we actually used voting machines and made a record of how we voted. And once we voted, it printed out a card, and we put it into a machine that read it, but there's a paper trail. And I'm an old man, and I use paper. Everything I do, my bills all come in paper form. And they come in paper form, so I have a record of how I paid, when I paid, what I paid. In this case, the machines used to not have a paper trail, and now they do. When I got to Bentley City Hall where I vote, the two machines that were there weren't working, and they offered me a paper ballot to vote. And I chose not to use the paper ballot. But even the paper ballot was fed into the same machine that read my printout from the machine. And I commend you and the Sedgwick County Commissioner, or the Voting Commissioner, on the machines that we have to vote on now that not only keep a track electronically, but paper. And that came about when one of the candidates for an office chose to ask for a recount and paid for it. But what that showed me was, because it turned out to be the same, the number of ballots that were told to you people, and the number of ballots that came about after the recount turned out to be exactly the same, which in my opinion shows us the machines and the paperwork. The other thing was, as a precinct committeeman, I had a right to observe. The ballots that you had approved were write-ins, and then the trays went down, I went down also as an observer to see how they went about counting the paper ballots, not the paper ballots, the mail-in ballots, and was amazed at how they did it. If you've never watched it before, I suggest if you're able to be an observer, you go watch the procedure. When I got there, one of the Election Commissioner's personnel was there, Sandy, and she told me, if I had any questions, ask her, and she'd be more than happy to answer them. And as they went on doing what they did to count the mail-in ballots, I asked her questions. And I kind of was amazed, because I think she realized that if I asked her a question and she answered it, but she didn't answer it fully, I'd ask her another question. And I never had to do that, because when I asked her a question, she answered it to me with enough knowledge, I didn't have to ask her the next question, because she already answered it. And it's amazing the fact that those ballots go down there, the envelopes are cut open, and they're given to a people, and the ballot is removed, and they're instructed, the ballot is the only thing that remains out of that envelope. If there's anything else in it, you put it back in the envelope, and you lay it up there away from the ballot. And the ballots aren't even unfolded yet. And until all the ballots are opened, the envelopes, once they're all open, Sandy went around and picked up all the empty envelopes and put them in a box. And then they were told to open the ballots and put it out flat. And there was a little yellow piece of paper on each one that was to stay with the ballot. And I think it had precinct numbers on it. Because once they did that and flattened them out, then she instructed them on how to decide how they were going to be voted, and how they'd put them in precincts by numbers, like 100, 101, 102. But to make a long story short, and it was a long story, after they did the recount, the recount came out exactly as it was recorded to begin with, which showed me the system worked, and it works extremely well. I never did quite understand why he chose the candidate that was down 75 votes, thought he was going to change it to 76, where he might win, which would have only proved one thing to me, the system wasn't very good if there was 75 votes one time and 76 reversed the next. I appreciate the ability to come here and talk to you all about what the voting machines appear to be to me, how they work, and the Election Commissioner and her staff, and what a great job they did. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranza has a comment.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Peaster for coming down today, and I want to take this opportunity, I've been intending to talk to the manager, maybe even the chairman. I think this is a story that really needs to be told and hasn't been told. There's been a lot of, you know, things talked about, the election office and integrity of the elections, and I think that this audit that occurred, just, as he said, basically validated this new equipment. Now, there was paper trail in the past, but it was in these rolls, and I can assure you, I can just imagine the nightmare that would have been if they would have had it done in ballot with those, they'd have to go through those rolls and then cut all individual votes off, and then try to sort them out. But now with this new machine that scanned in, and we have the paper ballots, I don't know if we, we might want to consider having the Election Commissioner come here, give us a briefing, or having our staff do a video that we can put out on the internet that shows some of the changes, and here's what happened. We had an audit of, it was basically close to 8,000 votes, I think, and it was exactly correct, exactly correct when they counted manually. And I think we need to kind of get that story out there, because we invested a fair amount of taxpayer dollars in this, and I think it's been beneficial, and if they know this, I think it'll help, you know, them have confidence in the machines and in the process that we use, both during the election and during the recount, because we had, I think, 12 people. I think, I don't know, there's no one here from the election, I think it was six from the Democrat Party and six from the Republican Party, I think that's required by statute, and they worked together and they went through the process, and it's just amazing. I didn't expect it to be off by 75, but I wouldn't have been surprised if there was a one or two, three, you know, a couple, maybe a little bit of an error, but there was none. It was exactly the same. And I think that's something we need to get out and be proud of, and the citizens of Sedgwick County can have confidence, I think, in the way we do things here in Sedgwick County.
Thank you Commissioner. Just to echo Commissioner Ranza's comments, first of all, those machines were purchased before I became a member, so I can't take credit for any of the success with the machines. But fact is, we do have a paper trail that does not indicate any way, shape, or form who cast that ballot, but it is able to be audited now, which I think is great. And we did learn a few things during the vote canvas that we took, and maybe there's some things that we can do in the future with legislative changes to make the process even easier for our voters. For example, if you do early voting, you can go across the street, and it doesn't matter what precinct that you're in, you can vote across the street. But on the election day, you have to go to your polling place. Why can't we have it so that we can go to any polling place? If you're working downtown and your polling place is on the east side or the west side, why can't we make it easier for you and let you vote anywhere? Because our machines will do that. But it requires legislative change, and I think that we've got folks here on the Commission that agree with me that that would be a very good change to make in our election process. So, Mr. Peaster, we appreciate you coming and speaking on this issue, and it's something that we are, as citizens, very proud of, that we do have the opportunity to vote. Our vote counts, and our vote is private. Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioner Howe?
Well, I just want to make a couple more comments. This is a great topic, I'm glad that it was raised this morning. Actually, the numbers I heard was it was 16 FTE, or 16 people had to sort, sort those ballots out, and then it took two days to tally those, and they only tallied the paper. They didn't, they didn't have anything to do with machinery at all. One thing I think is maybe still misunderstood right now is that the electronic machine that people vote on today is just a sophisticated printer. All it does is print on a piece of paper. And the voter, if they were to make a mistake, they could, again, they could verify their selections on the paper. If it's incorrect, they can turn that into election worker, have that voided, and start the process over again, if that's what they wanted to do. But it gives that voter a chance to actually look at a piece of paper and verify their selections, and that, all that machine does actually is print a piece of paper. It's just a sophisticated printer. It doesn't do any tallying. All the tallying is done on the electronic scanner, and that's what the audit did, it was replace the electronic scanner and manually tallied out the pieces of paper, and it actually matched exactly. And by the way, I think the Election Commissioner, by law, was not allowed to be personally involved in any way. She had to stand at arm's length and not have anything to do with the actual audit of that, and they did not know the number they were trying to, they didn't know the number they were trying to get to, that was not provided to them, and at the end of the day, they came up with the exact same count. And so it just, I think it just proves that the scanners are actually doing their job. And by the way, we, as a Commission, I'm proud of us, we actually led on this issue last couple of years, and it is now state law, starting in January, unfortunately, it should be this next election, but in January, we'll actually have required audits on every election. It's random, random precincts, random races. I think it's going to be tremendous. So the recount provided an opportunity, opportunity to do that this election, which I, we've been anxious for this for years. And I was looking forward to talking to Beth Clarkson, the lady that highlighted the problems with the, with the RTAL logs and the previous equipment, and she's still trying to resolve that. She sent out an email just yesterday regarding that old, that old discussion, but even she's excited about this new equipment. I talked to her face-to-face. She thinks this is the right equipment in terms of producing a paper ballot that can be verified by the voter, as well as an audit process. So we've done the right things by having paper ballots, and every, every single voter has a paper ballot now, no matter how you vote, and it can be manually tallied, the elections are secure, they are, anonymity of the voters is maintained through the process, and it can be audited. In fact, we will mandate audits starting in January. So I'm extremely proud of the Commission for leading on every one of those issues and getting this thing where we can actually finally have these things done. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Peaster, thank you for being here and speaking this morning. I don't have anyone else that has signed up to speak. Mr. Peaster, do you have a comment?
Could I make one more? When I, when they took my ID and then they printed it out, and I had to sign it like a machine, just like you would if you went to the bank to withdraw money, or you went to a credit union, or you went to Dillon's, or you went to Leakers. And the one thing that I found out was the stylus they had, the end of it was too soft, and it was too big, and it needs to be changed, in my opinion. If you go to Leakers or Dillon's, it's a hard point that you sign on the computer with. And I can guarantee you that if you went back and looked at my ID and my signature, I couldn't even tell you for sure it was mine, because as we get older, we push harder, but no matter how hard I pushed with that rubber end, as big as it was, it didn't look like my signature when I got done with it. And my suggestion would be that you change the stylus that the people make with, that they use to sign, because everybody had to sign that computer once their ID was put on there and put into that machine, which was separate than the machine we voted on. And thank you for letting me speak again.
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if anyone else in the audience would like to speak on any issue, please let me know, and we'll give you an opportunity at this time. Seen no one? Thank you. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of August 1st, 2018.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to look at the minutes from August 1st, 2018. All Commissioners were present. I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seen none? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Before we go to the next item, I normally try and recognize all the electeds in the audience, but I neglected to announce that Tom Keel from Derby City Council is in the back of the room today, so welcome. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, Proclamation Declaring National Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas direct support professionals, direct care workers, and in-home support workers are primarily, are the primary providers of publicly funded, long-term supports and services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Sedgwick County. And whereas direct support professionals must build close, respectful, and trusted relationship with individuals with disabilities, and whereas direct support professionals provide a broad range of individualized support, including employment support, meal preparation, bathing, dressing, transportation, and a pursuit of personal interests and relationships. And whereas direct support professionals provide essential support to help individuals with disabilities to develop and maintain connections to family and friends and communities, and whereas direct support professionals assist individuals with disabilities in making choices that lead to meaningful, productive, and successful lives in their community and avoid costly institutional care. And whereas direct support professionals help strengthen Sedgwick County communities by facilitating inclusion for people with disabilities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize September 19th to the 15th, 2018, as National Direct Support Professional Recognition Week in Sedgwick County, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance. Commissioners, we've heard the proclamation. I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seen none? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, and we have Colin McKinney here, the CEO of Starkey, to accept the proclamation today. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good morning Chairman, members of the Commission. We greatly appreciate you making the time for this proclamation this morning. I think the proclamation did a great job of describing the amazing work that our direct support professionals do, and so I should probably stop there, but I won't. We don't spend nearly enough time talking about the amazing sacrifices of our direct support professionals. When I think about my time with Sedgwick County, I probably remember your 24, 365 functions the most. Sedgwick County is always on the move, looking out for the citizens of our county, and our direct support professionals are doing the exact same thing. As the proclamation stated, we are meeting personal care needs, we're helping people learn life skills, prepare meals, get dressed, take their medications, get a job, everything under the sun, as I say, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And next week is our opportunity to do what we should probably do every day of the year, and make a big deal out of the sacrifices that our direct support professionals make. With all of that being said, I'd like to introduce Carrie Wade, who oversees our Gateway Program, and she has some guests as well.
Thank you, welcome.
Good morning. With me I have Debbie Green, who is a staff, a direct support professional at the Gateway Program. She's been there for eight years, and Garrett Funston, who attends the Gateway Program. It is our privilege to accept this proclamation on behalf of all direct support professionals in Sedgwick County. The hard work and dedication that DSPs provide to the individuals that we serve every day does not go unrecognized. I am honored to work alongside some of these great staff and are so very proud of the work that they do. So today, I personally want to say thank you to all the direct support professionals. You do great work every day, and the individuals we serve would not have the quality of life that they deserve if it was not for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, along with the language of the proclamation, I'd just like to express my personal appreciation for your efforts on behalf of citizens in our community who need a little extra care. You know, it's oftentimes unrecognized, the effort that you all put forward, and so an opportunity to say thank you is sincere and profound on the part of the Commission that we want to express our gratitude for what you do. You know, folks who are in need of these services, and family members who help provide them, and volunteers, along with professionals, they're involved in something that requires 24/7, every day of the year, and it's, and it's a burden that needs to be shared. So we're, we're really grateful that you all are willing to do that, and thankful for the service that you provide.
Thank you Commissioner Unruh. I think Commissioner Unruh speaks for all five of us up here in how much that we appreciate what everyone does to help us support our mission overall here at Sedgwick County. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you Commissioners for your support and helping to make this happen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
New Business. Item C, Island Annexation Request for the City of Derby pursuant to City of Derby Resolution Number 15-2018.
Morning Justin.
Morning Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Here to present on an island annexation request by the City of Derby. by the City of Derby. I'll refer to the first map here, and on this map, it shows all the city limits for the City of Derby within green. The area that's proposed to be annexed is in the red, or pinkish colored crosshatching. It's approximately nine acres in size what's proposed to be annexed, just to the east of the city's boundaries. It would be near the intersection of 79th Street South and Webb Road. While the land to be annexed would actually join some of the city's boundaries, it's a prior island annexation from 2007, and you can't island annex land next to an island unless the city's boundaries have grown out to that island. In this case, they have not. I'm going to refer you to the second map here, which is zoomed in a bit, and shows, again, in the red crosshatching, the area that's proposed to be annexed. The, the island that it is proposed to join onto, I guess you would say, was a 2007 island annexation, and a plaque called the Quail Run Edition. That, that land actually has yet to be developed, as you can see from this aerial, it's from 2017. I'm making a presumption here, but it was platted in 2007. I think a lot of real estate developments faced challenges shortly after that. And the lots, I'm sorry, the lots that are platted on this are standard size. I've been in communication with City of Derby staff, and this was also on their agenda, that they are proposing to replat this land as what would be called the Cedar Ranch Estates, which would have slightly larger plat, or, I'm sorry, lot sizes in the plaits, from .7 acres to roughly two acres being some of the bigger lots. The property owner specifically has requested this annexation, as indicated within a request for annexation by consent, which is included in the backup materials. The City of Derby intends to extend municipal services to the property, including water, sewer, fire, and police protection. I believe they have some staff members present who could answer questions on that in more detail. The City of Derby's City Council approved the resolution unanimously to seek an island annexation, and the Board of County Commissioners has 30 days from when we receive that to make a finding. We received this on August 8th, so it suggests that we make a finding today, and that's why it's on the agenda. Per the county's resolution on annexation matters, ISOC County staff comment on this. Metropolitan Area Planning Department provided comment, they suggested making a finding that this annexation would not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area, nor any other city within Sedgwick County. The only other comment that I had received was from Sedgwick County Public Works. They had indicated they did not have any concerns about this proposed annexation. No other city in Sedgwick County has indicated this parcel is within their future growth area, and this area is contained within the urban growth area for the City of Derby within the comprehensive plan that the Board of County Commissioners adopted in 2016. State statute lays out three requirements under which an island annexation can occur, which include that the land is required to be located in the same county as the city. Here it is. The second is that the owners of the property must petition or consent to the annexation. As I mentioned, the owners had actually petitioned for annexation here. And then lastly, the Board of County Commissioners, by a two-thirds vote, essentially four of the five commissioners, would have to find the annexation will not hinder and prevent the proper growth and development of the area, or any other city within Sedgwick County. The recommendation from staff is to make the finding that this would not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or any other city. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, commissioners.
Any questions? Commissioner Howe?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but if it's appropriate time, I, I just want to say, I think this, I want to ask one question. The, the service plan that was for the previous island annexation, is it the same would be carried over to this?
Commissioner, they actually do not have to submit a service plan on island annexation. They have to on unilateral annexations, where the property owner hasn't necessarily asked to be.
Okay.
But in this case, they didn't have.
I didn't have my backup, so I was just curious how that was working, so.
Correct.
But is, is their intent, if they're going to do, it sounds like they're planning to do sewer and water whenever this does develop, and city, city services, as they do anyplace else?
That's my understanding. Like I said, I think the City of Derby staff, if you have more specific questions on that, could address it, but they, they aren't required to submit a service plan. So all I know at this point is, the Planning Department staff report did, which is in your backup materials, did address that some, that they could put sewer and water onto this property. And I think it's customary for Derby to also, you know, they would take over police and fire for this area as well.
Okay. I don't actually have any questions. I just want to say, City of Derby always does a great job on their annexation. They're, I think, one of the, they actually set the bar very high. Other cities, I think, should look at Derby as setting, you know, basically as the bar on how they should do it. Derby's done a great, a great job on that. So Kathy Sexton does a tremendous job every time, and she's got good staff that brings complete packages to us. There's almost never any questions, and in fact, when, I don't have any, I don't have any questions. I have not sensed any opposition to this in any, in any way. In fact, I think I'm, I'm kind of anxious to see this start developing. I think this is a great place for Derby to, to grow. I would, I would point out, there is an issue with Webb Road, I'll bring up later in today's meeting. If you see on your, on your map in your book, on page 18, it's numbered at the bottom of the page. There's an issue with Webb Road, I'll probably bring up later today, potentially. The, the plating does show access to this development from 79th Street South, we call it Madison, in the City of Derby, and it also shows access from Webb Road. That may be an issue of discussion going forward. But nevertheless, I have no problems with this, and as, as the commissioner of this district, this district has this area in the, in its geography, I'd like to make the motion when it's the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other commissioners have questions for you, Justin. Has anyone in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Okay. I see no one. Commissioner Howe?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, we find that proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area, or that any of the other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and therefore approve the resolution. I guess there's exact language. I move that we make, take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next two items, we're going to call two together.
Okay. Item D, consideration of a grant in the amount of $153,998 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Samaritan and Safe Net Program, and also the consideration of a grant in the amount of $972,551 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Shelter Plus Care Housing Program.
Good morning, Chairman, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present these two agenda items together. They both relate to, they all relate to a larger community response to a HUD Notice of Funding Availability. The continuum of care in this community works together to identify and prioritize appropriate housing programs to be funded by HUD, and then the United Way is the lead applicant for that process. And so I'm going to describe two different programs. The first would be the Samaritan and Safety Net. This is a renewal request for funds in the amount of $153,998, and it represents 19 different units of housing that are leased by an organization and then made available to individuals experiencing homelessness. Calm Care is the applicant, and if approved, they will pass this funding on to the Mental Health Association, and MHA will manage the program. And there's a third application tied to these two programs that combines the two requests into one. Calm Care and MHA are also working with HUD, so that next year, MHA would be the applicant rather than Calm Care. And I know that sounded pretty complicated, and maybe even a little convoluted, but I think it's a really good example of how this community works together. The initial applications for Samaritan and Safety Net were by two other organizations, and they were awarded those funds, they delivered that programming for a few years, and then came to the realization that they were not able to adequately provide that programming. And so Calm Care stepped in as the applicant, and received those funds, and did that work, until MHA recognized that that was kind of in their area of expertise, and so we've worked with MHA, and eventually, MHA will be the recipient of those funds. But the community came together, and a number of different organizations went through this onerous application process and reporting process, to make sure that these resources weren't lost to the community. So that is the Samaritan and Safety Net request. And then the other request is related to the Shelter Plus Care Program. This is also a renewal request. The, the grant application is for a program known as Shelter Plus Care, and that pairs housing vouchers with services to help individuals that may be experiencing one of three different barriers to housing, in addition to their homelessness. So they either need to be experiencing a severe mental illness, they are experiencing substance use disorder, or they're, they fall in the category of HIV/AIDS experience. And so they have to have one of those three barriers in addition to homelessness, then they are referred to this program, the Shelter Plus Care Program, by one of three partner agencies, Calm Care, Miracles Inc., or University of Kansas School of Medicine. And then those organizations provide case management, so that's the care component of the Shelter Plus Care, along with housing vouchers. And so those two things combined help individuals overcome whatever it is that led them into experiencing homelessness. And again, the, the point of all of these programs is to make sure that people have safe and adequate housing. The typical Shelter Plus Care individual is, is a single adult, but the Shelter Plus Care Program is unique, in that it will also help families if that head of households is experiencing one of those disabling characteristics. This is, there are income guidelines related to this program. The income is capped at 185% of the federal poverty level, and if individuals have an income, they're expected to contribute 30% of that income towards the rent of these, this apartment or house. The grant amount is $972,551, and this represents 112 vouchers at fair market rental rates, as determined by HUD, and it also pays for one case manager who works with landlords, applicants, and the case management programming partners, to make sure that everyone's able to maintain housing in, in a safe and appropriate way. The Shelter Plus Care component is the largest segment of this community response. The community application is just over $2.5 million. And I'd like to recognize, Beth Oaks is with United Way, they're the lead applicant agency, and then we've got program staff, Jen Wilson and Jen McGill here as well, that have helped put together this, all of this information. I would recommend that the, that you approve the application for these grants, authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents, including the grant award, and, and any necessary budget adjustments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question. I just want to express appreciation to you, Mr. Kaufman, as Director of our Public Services, and all of the various departments that you work with, and the community partners that you work with. You described it as a big consortium of folks who kind of work together, and I know they're kind of somewhat loosely connected, but it takes coordination, and in order to bring these assets to our community, it, it takes coordination and hard work. I think you described it as an onerous process. But in order to bring the benefit to citizens in the community who need this sort of help, and we can access resources outside our local tax base to get this done, I think it's commendable, and just wanted to thank you and all the partners for doing that. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take the recommended action.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, do we know how long these, these grants have been flowing through the county?
I don't have that information with me. I know that it's been more than 10 years.
Yeah, okay. I want to say, thank you. This is obviously important to our community, and I do want to echo the, the comments of Commissioner Unruh, but I'd like to just point out, this is one of the most complicated grants that I've seen, in terms of the backup material. The audience can't see this, but I'll tell you, I just calculated it, there's 370 pages of backup material to make these two grants happen. That's a lot of staff expertise to make this go forward.
Absolutely.
So, just want to say thank you to the staff. This is obviously important, and it's very difficult to, to apply for and to execute this grant, and I want to say, appreciate what you do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't see any other comments. By the way, it's 372 pages, but Commissioner Unruh and I do it on our computers, so it's zero pages that we printed out.
And I read every word.
Anyway, just a comment. I don't see the other comments. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item, please.
Item F, quarterly Intertrust Bank Arena report.
Martin Lindsay and AJ.
Okay, I think everyone should have a handout of today's presentation with you. Lindsay Poursot, CFO, I'm here today, and it is my pleasure, as every quarter, to give you an update on Intertrust Bank Arena's performance through the first half of 2018, and we'll contrast that information with 2017 for the same time period. I am joined today by AJ Beleski, the General Manager, excuse me, for Intertrust Bank Arena of SMG, and I want to say thank you to him and his team, particularly Chris Kibler, Ben Ficus, and Christina Pelakis for all of their help in preparing this information, and a shout out to David Paracone from the County Manager's Office, who did all of the hard work in putting this presentation together for you today. So with that, we will get into the details. As with every presentation you've seen, we'll talk about the same general discussion points. We'll quickly cover the SMG agreement with the county. We'll talk about parking, the arena sales tax reserve, and then AJ will come up and tell you what you really want to know, which is all the upcoming events you have to look forward to. So, of course, as you know, SMG was hired by the county back in 2007 to operate our Intertrust Bank Arena. Through that agreement, we actually have a fairly unique partnership, in that SMG bears the responsibility for any loss, and then we have a profit sharing arrangement. Once at least $400,000 in revenue is received, SMG keeps that, and then we split the next So as with any quarterly report, we'll talk through ticket sales, some of the community affairs, and the financial summary. So while there were six fewer performances at the arena through the first half of 2018 versus 2017, at 57 total, you can see that all of the other statistics on this slide are actually up for the same time period. For example, attendance is up 14.3% in the first half of the year versus last year, at about 28,900. The number of tickets sold also are up by 7,000. Gross ticket sales, this is especially impressive to me, are up from about 5.6 million last year to 8.1 million this year, or about 2.5 million. And then the average cost per ticket sold also is up by about $12. We did have a, as you know, terrific first half of this year. In the second quarter, this quarter that we'll be talking about, James Taylor was here, PBR, Professional Bull Riding, Outcry, Kevin Hart, and Arena Cross. There were five force games and four thunder games, including some playoffs. And of course, in our first quarter, we had US Figure Skating, we had Oklahoma City Blue, we had Pink, and of course, the NCAA Tournament. So in terms of community affairs, even though there were fewer performances at the arena in the first half of the year versus last year, the number of community groups that volunteered was flat at 94. Amount paid to community groups was up by about $44,000. Spending with Sedgwick County, Kansas companies through the first half of the year totaled about $2.3 million, and that, as I said, was up over last year as well. Sales tax paid was up as well. The number of arena presentations and tours was up slightly, and local events and activities actually were down a bit. So as we move into the financial summary, again, I don't want to berate you with the details of these definitions and read everyone out loud to you, but as we go through the next few slides, if you do have questions about what's contained in any of the categories, you might flag the Slide 6 to refer back to. Of course, net building income is kind of the bottom line, and so we'll focus on that as we move through these next few slides. So this slide reflects activity in only the second quarter, so April, May, and June alone. What you'll see is that there were 15 total performances in this quarter, and bear in mind that there were, I believe, 57 total so far this year, so only 15 in the second quarter. Total gross building income was $861,000. Indirect expenses were about $1.2 million. Indirect expenses were about $1.2 million, so that in the second quarter, expenses exceeded revenues by about $317,000. Now, of course, if you look at the arena year-to-date, that number and that story is quite different. Again, there were 57 total performances, total gross building income of about $3.1 million. That was offset by about $2.5 million of indirect expenses. So through the first half of the year so far, arena, the arena's net building income is $540,600. So certainly a picture we like to see and something to be proud of. Looking at the information that we've looked at before in kind of a summary here, you'll see how the number of performances compare year-to-date versus the same time period last year, as well as the number of events. Again, there may be multiple events, or I'm sorry, multiple performances per event, or there may be an event that occurs that's not necessarily a performance, maybe a special meeting or something like that. And net event income was down just about 71,000, but still, as we saw on the previous slide, overall net building income is up 540,000. So if we look at our income categories, again, if you're interested in knowing the details of what's in any of these, I'm happy to talk about that, or you can refer back to Slide 6. Other operating income is up. Total gross building income is essentially flat, but slightly up. Looking at expenses, indirect expenses are actually slightly greater through the same time period by about 79,000. Net building income is down slightly, though it's still, as we talked about, at $540,000, a good news story. So how does all of that look then for our sales tax reserves? Authorized uses for that, of course, include major repairs or capital equipment at the arena, and of course, that's what we have primarily used that for in the last few years. If there was ever a situation where we needed to pay the city for parking, that funding would come from this reserve as well. And of course, operations and maintenance of what we affectionately call the Coleman Parking Lot also come from this. So when we look at the status of the sales tax reserve, at the end of the second quarter, the balance in that fund is about $8.7 million. And this slide will show for you what the revenues and, of course, no expenses were in that second quarter. So looking at the status of the reserve, of course, you know, from last year to this year, we've had a number of capital improvement projects, including that entrance C remodel. And so overall, the balance in that reserve is down about 2.7 million at this point compared to last year. With that, I will be happy to turn it over to AJ to talk about the fund stuff, unless there are any questions I can answer for you before.
I don't see any questions. Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay.
AJ, welcome.
Good morning and welcome. AJ Beleski with SMG and In Trust Bank Arena. Thanks for the opportunity today, and thanks Lindsay, as always, for the great presentation. Just a couple of updates on ticket donations and community involvement projects. So second quarter and third quarter, you'll see in our next presentation, that's when we do a lot of our community involvement. That's when we have a little bit more time to do those activities. So you'll see the ticket donations that go down several pages here. Again, we try to always accommodate pretty much every request that comes in from nonprofits locally for upcoming events. Also, from a community service standpoint, we've done Bull for Kids' Sake back in April, Habitat for Humanity, Special Olympics has been a tradition for us. We do the swimming events every summer, and then also, those are some of the community involvement, and then you'll see the ticket donations there as well. So we've also been busy with community involvement in July and August, and you'll see that in our next presentation when we do third quarter. Upcoming events. So this weekend, we have 311 and the Offspring coming up, and then Leonard Skinnerd at the end of the month. Cirque du Soleil coming up in October. We just recently announced Carrie Underwood for its September of 2019. So I need to make sure we say that correct year, 2019. It is over a year away, so we want to make sure nobody shows up this coming September for Carrie Underwood, but we're excited to have her back. She's been here a couple of times before, and always is great. And then yesterday, we just announced Lindsay Sterling coming up November 29th, a new act to the arena we have not hosted before. She's a violinist who plays arenas and draws pretty good crowds, and we are excited to have her coming up. Also looking forward to Wichita Thunder Hockey coming back, October 12 and 13. They will start play. And then also, you see it on the list right there, Jeff Dunham coming up, coming back in February. He's always been a good act for us. And then we have several announcements coming up in the month of September. It's a busy, busy time for us. A couple more hopefully for this year, like we just mentioned, and then also, as we get into 19, we'll be announcing more events coming up in 19. One other item that I did want to mention, we're pretty proud of, since we last met, our arena was acknowledged by the International Association of Venue Managers. It's called IAVM. We are members of that association. We go to many of their conventions and think very highly of them in our industry. They awarded In Trust Bank Arena with the 2018 Venue Excellence Award. So this is an award that we won about five years ago in 2013. They only hand out five of these a year. This is all facilities, theaters, convention centers, stadiums, arenas. So out of that whole giant big number, whatever that number is, there's five of them, and we won one. So we're pretty proud of that, proud of our staff for doing that. You know, we talk a lot about ticket sales and rankings and those kinds of things. This has nothing to do with ticket sales. This is about how you operate your building. It's service to community, so what we just talked about with community involvement. It's team building and professional development within the staff. It's based on safety and security. We obviously put a lot of emphasis on that, and then operational excellence, how you operate your venue. So we are thrilled with our, very proud of our staff for winning that award, and proud to be able to showcase Sedgwick County's facility in doing so. So very happy about that. That was awarded back in July, and we'll be talking about it for a long time, but hopefully we'll win it again someday.
Super. We appreciate it. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were all able to go over to the arena with the latest announcement, NCAA Women's coming to Wichita here in 2022, isn't it?
Correct. So the men's event will be back in '21, and then we were just awarded 2022. This is a regional, so there will be eight teams here. The winners, actually, I'm sorry, four teams here. The winners will advance to the final four. The winner of our site will advance to the final four. So that's pretty cool. The final four definitely goes through Wichita and Sedgwick County, and we're excited to be able to bring that event. We last hosted the women's event in 2011. That was a first and second round, so there were eight teams at that site, and then they went to the next round, which is what we're hosting this time. So thanks for bringing that up. We're super excited to be hosting that event, partnering with Wichita State, who will be the host for the women's regional.
I wanted to make sure that we mentioned that, that Wichita State is actually the one that is the host of that. So we appreciate them putting in the paperwork to do that. But it also, it was a partnership with not only Wichita State, but with the City of Wichita, with Visit Wichita, with Sedgwick County to make that happen. And we are very pleased that we are part of that, and how that our In Trust Bank Arena is recognized as a great place to host an event like that. The economic impact of the latest one was just released here a few days ago, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the total economic impact, I don't know if you've got them with you.
I do have it.
I want to let everybody know what the economic impact of that last event was on the men's NCAA.
Sure. So this is from the event back in March. So the economic activity that was created from outside, out-of-town visitors was 5.5 million. And then also, this, this event has a lot to do with our local community as well. There's a lot of people that live here that went to the NCAA, and we're excited about having this event back for the first time in many years. Local, local folks created another 6.2 million in economic impact for, for that event. So the tax revenue was about $495,000. So we work with Visit Wichita. Commissioner mentioned, we have a great partnership with them, with Wichita State, the city, and the county, and we've had a great model in hosting these NCAA events, and we continue to do so. In this case, Visit Wichita contracted with Wichita State University, their Center for Economic Development and Business Research, and they're the ones that did the economic impact study and came up with these numbers. We are excited. Not only was it a great event for the entire community, it had a great economic impact, and it also sets us up for future events, as we just talked about. Just continuing that relationship with the NCAA and be able to bring big-time sporting events and big-time events to our community.
Great. Well, those figures were just released, and I know we've talked about it previously. But those of us who went downtown to the arena during that event, it was packed. It was just amazing to see what was happening in our community, not only inside of that arena, but around the arena at the same time, all the events that were going on. I didn't go to Omaha, but I watched it on TV, and it was dead outside the arena at Omaha. So it was completely different picture between what I saw on TV from Omaha. There may have been something going on I didn't see, because all I saw was what was on my TV screen, but what I saw going on downtown was just absolutely amazing. So as I said in my comments when, when we announced the women coming, it wouldn't have happened without the citizens here, and those are the people that I always want to make sure that we recognize, is that the citizens in Sedgwick County voted to build that arena. They're the ones that really received the credit and deserve the credit for us being able to host events such as those and have a venue downtown that receives awards. So anytime that I make any comments about the arena, I want to make sure that I recognize the people that made that happen, and that was the people that voted to put a short-term one-cent sales tax that completely paid for that and gave us an operating income, a reserve that we're able to keep going. So I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions, though, from comments from Commissioners. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, some of the revenue to the community speculation before the NCAA. I'm just curious, because the Kansas team got to play, I think it was KU was there, did that have any impact on, can you speculate whether that had any impact on our, on our forecast versus actual performance in terms of, my thought was, people probably drove here rather than spent the night here, and so I don't know if that had any impact on those numbers. Can you speculate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, the teams that come to the event are definitely going to have an impact on who travels here and where they travel from, and how many of them travel, and how they travel. So in the case of KU being right down, you know, right up the road, not too far away. And also, the other thing that impacts it is when they end up playing. So in both cases, I think with KU here, they, they played during the day. It allowed for ample time to get here and get back to Lawrence or get back to another part of the state if they're visiting. So that's going to impact it. I would say it probably impacted us, but we were extremely happy with the numbers that came in and looking forward to the next opportunity down the road.
Very good. My, my second question is, I, I kind of, kind of counted up, I don't know if I counted accurately or not, but the ticket donations, I'm not going to ever ask you this question before. Can you please describe, what do you, what do you mean by ticket donations? I assume this is to help those charitable organizations raise money for themselves? Can you talk about that for just a moment?
Sure. So we have a process on our website that's laid out that basically a nonprofit organization from here in this community can reach out to us and request tickets for an event. They can use those, a lot of them use them for silent auctions to raise money for their, their organizations. And so we have a, like I said, a process in place for that, and then depending on availability, you know, different times of the year are different, but normally we're able to accommodate the majority of those requests. We're pretty proud of that. I think it added up to somewhere in the $40,000 value range of tickets that are donated annually for arena events to, to local nonprofit organizations.
That's awesome. I think there's over 100, 100 lines on this report of ticket donations to help our community, so that's tremendous. I do want to say, I think you do a tremendous job. I have one quick question for Lindsay. Is this the, I think this may be the, if I'm reading this correctly, the second quarter, our reserve fund actually went up about a half million dollars. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, sir. In the, in the second quarter, it did.
That's a little unusual, isn't it?
It is. It's mostly due to timing, so it's when we receive revenues for things like naming rights, when we do any of the installment payments or receive installment payments, and then it's a matter of when we're invoiced to remit that funding over to the arena, and so you likely will see more activity than in the third quarter. It really is just a function of time in the second quarter.
Oh, okay. Well, that explains that. Well, I'll just wrap this up, saying, AJ, you do a great job. Thank you for all you do for this community, and I'm excited to go to the Breaking Benjamin and Five Finger Death Punch concert. That'll be a lot of fun. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Lindsay, while you're up there, how close are we to auto-renewing?
I am so glad you brought that question up. We actually have two years left in the contract for where over a five-year period, we would want to collect $850,000 in order to hit that trigger through 2017. We are already at $815,652, so we really only need about another $34,500 to get there. And that could happen potentially even a year early.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I just wanted to congratulate AJ on the award that you all just received. It's, you know, when we first started out on the project to build an arena, the goal was to have a first-class sport and entertainment event center. And so it doesn't just mean the structure itself, which is a beautiful structure, but it also means the way it's operated. So you all winning this award is not only a compliment to you and your staff, which we'd, we'd want you to let them know how much we appreciate it, but it's, it's just gratifying to the Commission to know that we're, we're hitting the goal, and that's because of your good management. So thanks to you and, and your whole team. We, we truly are appreciative of the way that you are sensitive to making the, sure that the fans have a good experience, but we're also grateful that you want to run a facility and keep it up to the highest standards possible. So, so thanks for your great effort.
Thank you very much for those, for those words, and thank you guys for the opportunity to manage your facility.
And I also wanted to say that, once again, I'm, I'm really pleased with what was shown to us on Slide Number Five about the community affairs slide. You know, to have different volunteer concession groups that have an opportunity to serve the community and make some money for the different groups is great. 94 different people, 94 different groups that are involved in that, but also spending with Sedgwick County companies, you know, about $2.25 million, that's, that's great to keep the money here at home, and the result of that's $827,000 worth of taxes we collected, which we'll try to be good stewards of that. But all in all, it's a good report, and just want to thank you for your effort and your continued focus on keeping the community involved.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Lindsay, great presentation, but AJ, I wanted to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Unruh's saying. You and your staff, you're filled with a lot of rock stars. Commissioner Unruh and I were able to go to the Spaghetti Works Groundbreaking, which it'll be two weeks, I think, tomorrow, and the city council had mentioned that they had worked with you guys at the arena, and I think that's going to be a wonderful entrance for that whole area, and it's going to be a big benefit to the arena once it gets completed with future outdoor events and just be an extension of what you're doing. And your partnership with the City of Wichita did not go unnoticed, and they were, they were singing your praises, too. So I'm excited to see that, that development come along there.
As are we. We appreciate your words as a result. We, we're looking forward to that park and that whole area being renovated, and I think it also, the timing of the entrance C renovation that Lindsay spoke of last year, that helped a lot. That's going to play right into that area. That park potentially will be an area for pre-events to occur, prior to events at the facility, so, and then they can walk right down and get right into the building very easily, and a nice new plaza now. So really, the timing was great, and we appreciate you guys' partnership in allowing us to, to do that construction on the entrance C, which ties in very nicely to the park.
Thank you. Thank you, AJ. I don't see any other questions or comments. We appreciate the update. We look forward to the next quarterly update and see if things are even better, and I'll be trying to get some tickets. Jeff Dunham coming up, probably not Metallica, but Jeff Dunham.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, I may be receiving file.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receiving file. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item G, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting of August 30th, 2018.
Martin Joe.
Good morning, sir. And Commissioners, we'd like to give to you five items for your approval, and this are the items that were reviewed at the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of August 30th. Our first item is the Data Communications Products for Information Technology and Support Services. We're recommending to utilize the NASPA Master Agreements, Master Agreement of AR-233, which coincides with the State of Kansas Contracts 4286OB and 4286OG, and this will be good through May 31st, 2019. be good through May 31st, 2019. Second item is the IT security products and services for information technology and support services. This recommendation is to utilize the State of Kansas contracts 38294 and 38299, good through June 30th, 2019. Item number three is the white multi-fold paper towels for facilities maintenance, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Leif T. Williams and Associates, doing business as Williams Janitorial Supply, and this is to establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. Item number four is replace of the exterior joint sealant for the Adult Detention Facility North Edition for project services, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Restoration and Waterproofing Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $132,073. And our final item for today is conductive energy weapons and cameras for Sheriff's Office. This recommendation is to utilize the State of Kansas contract 42523, valid through 12/31/2023, and this, total purchases during this five-year contract are estimated to be $1,365,876.39. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the five items.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. All the commissioners have an opportunity to review these prior to the meeting. I don't see any questions. Move to approve the, take the recommended actions of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Anru?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, county manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items, hotel through Alpha Alpha.
Move to approve hotel through Alpha Alpha. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner How?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I totally support the motion, and I'm glad to vote in favor of this, but I just want to say, I'm proud of seeing two things on this agenda, and that's one, of the air ambulance transportation service, it's taken about six to eight months to work that out, and I'll say thank you to staff. I think this is the right thing for Sedgwick County. They're not going to do maybe just a few transports a year, but in those particular cases, this is extremely important to have that service available for those very critical folks, and so I think we're going to save lives with this. But the second thing is the pedestrian bridge in the city of Hayesville, along Meridian Bridge, we saw an opportunity at WAMPO, and the WAMPO has offered the money as federal funds and requires a fairly small local match, and I think the city of Hayesville is intending to partner with the county on this. But nevertheless, moving forward on this, in my opinion, solves a problem that's been in place for at least 10 years of discussion, and I'm just thankful to see those two things on the agenda. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, Commissioner How kind of stole the words out of my mouth, but yes, the pedestrian bridge is a great project and couldn't have happened without WAMPO, and obviously David Spears, our Public Works Director, was instrumental in that, but it'll...
Jim Weber.
And Jim Weber, yes, yes. Is Jim here? Yeah, there he is, in the back of the room, wonderful. Yeah, yeah, but it couldn't have happened without them, and even the leadership of Commissioner Norton trying to get that started. But if we can get this done, fingers crossed, but today's the first step to get that done on the county side, so wonderful work, everybody, so thank you.
Thank you. And the reason that that happened was because it was ready to go. We had year-end money available in WAMPO. We do have four members from Sedgwick County that serve on the WAMPO board, Commissioner Ranza, Commissioner How, and our clerk and I all serve on it, but it was ready to go. When we had year-end money, we were able to go immediately with that, so that worked absolutely outstanding, so.
Ready to go because of Jim Weber.
Ready to go, thanks to Jim Weber, yes. And all the public works. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Anru?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent issues.
Do we have anything for legislative issues today?
Karen Powell, Deputy County Counsel, we have none, no legislative issues to discuss at this time.
Okay, when are we going to start working those?
Very soon, very soon.
Okay. Definitive answer from our attorneys.
Yes.
Already have started working on it.
Very good, thanks. We do have a number of legislative issues coming up, so we need to start working those in the near future. Other, anyone have anything for other today? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, what's the next item?
Other.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for other? Commissioner Anru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thanks again to Public Works, to David and Jim, and also to Westar Energy for the three lights out at Greenwich Road and K-254. That's, most people know, that's a kind of a treacherous intersection with two lanes going each way at highway speed, and then a pretty active road, Greenwich, trying to get across all that and across the Big Media, and so there's been, you know, several accidents out on K-254, and this three lights they put at the intersection, I think is going to really improve it for the citizens of Sedgwick County, and especially those folks that live up around Bel Air and Keachai. So it's a great improvement, and we want to thank them for getting that job done. And my number-two item, I just wanted to say again, thanks to our folks at Calm Care and the folks on the Suicide Prevention Coalition for reminding us again about that important issue in our community. We have fairly high rate of suicide, and the efforts to keep us aware of that, I think, they prove profitable, because we all have a greater sensitivity to it. But along with that, I just want to say thanks to Tony Giuliano and people in communications for that great video that they produced. I think that was really well done, and I think it will be effective, so thanks for that good work. And that's all I have.
Commissioner How?
Commissioner Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Anru on his comments. I think suicide right now in Sedgwick County, the rates changing is quite alarming, actually. I don't know how wide-ranging this demographic is, if it's something that's much larger than Sedgwick County or not. I would like to understand that more deeply, but suicide rates have risen drastically, and I am very concerned about that, so as a commissioner, I'm listening, and I would like to know what we can do to combat that. But it's nice to know we have Community Crisis Center in place, and they're in the game, they're doing what they can, and I support them with passion. I wanted to just highlight the airshow this weekend. It's in the best district of Sedgwick County, by the way. We haven't had an airshow in this community for a very long time. I'm a huge advocate of McConnell Air Force Base, and it's just a tremendous asset for our community. I love them so much, but to have the huge number of static displays and flying aircraft, if the weather permits, we're going to see some tremendous flying this weekend, so please, if you haven't heard it yet, please know we have a great opportunity, and it's free. I heard someone say, well, the fair starts this weekend, and there's too many things to do in the area, I can't do everything. Well, that's a great problem to have. We talked about, you know, what are you going to do in What You Talk, Kansas? Well, there's more things to do than you could possibly go do this weekend, so, but the best one, in my opinion, is the airshow. Please participate and come out and support our airmen, airplanes that there are going to be just tremendous. So what a great opportunity. And then I did mention earlier about Web Road, I'm not going to bring that up, I may bring it up next week. There's kind of an emergent issue coming up, but I'm not going to deal with it today, so we'll do, potentially next week, we'll talk about Web Road, so I just wanted to close out that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, again, to echo Commissioner How's comments, I'm glad that the Army, the Navy, the Marines, Coast Guard can come out and see the finest organization in the Air Force.
There you go.
In their airshow this weekend, so we appreciate their opportunity to go out and take a look at it. Now, I know just our manager's looking the other way right now, so he definitely doesn't agree with me, but...
No comment.
I hope everyone has a chance to go out there, but Saturday's going to be a busy day, because we've got an airshow Saturday and Sunday, but also Saturday night is Zubalee, so I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to go out and support Sedgwick County Zoo and Zubalee. It's a tremendous event, it's the number-one fundraiser for the zoo, and I certainly would make the strongest recommendation that everyone go out and take a look at what's happening at Zubalee on Saturday night. Does anyone else have anything for other? Seeing nothing, we have no need for an executive session today, so I would like to adjourn the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners meeting for September 5th. I'd like to call to order...
Chairman, we have a fire agenda.
Yep, I was going to call that.
Oh, no.
And I'd like to call to order the Fire District Number One Board meeting for September
5th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranza?
Present.
Commissioner How?
Present.
Commissioner Anru? Present.
President. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on the public agenda today for the Fire Board. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on Fire District today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes, item paying, fire meeting minutes of August 1st, 2018.
Commissioners, everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from August 1st, 2018. All commissioners were present at that meeting, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Anru? Aye.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
We have one item on the consent agenda, item Bravo.
Commissioners, recommend you approve item Bravo.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for our county manager? Move to approve item Bravo. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Anru? Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Ranza?
I know we don't have another here, but I'd have some questions pertaining to the Fire District, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to get an update on the Andale Fire issue. I was out at a Farm Bureau forum last night, and I had somebody ask about it then. I still haven't, I mean, there's still some concern out there. I still have concern about exactly who authorized or required that that apparatus leave the scene. Have we got a definitive answer that we know for sure exactly how far up the chain and what happened there, and what the rationale was?
Commissioners, we have heard back from the city, which prompted us to work the mutual aid agreement to ensure that there are no human element that could make that happen in the future, so that was the driving force behind us redoing that mutual aid agreement. As far as who within the city of Wichita, they handled that as a personal matter and did an internal investigation, which based off the personal nature of it, we weren't privy to, but in an effort to ensure that it would never happen again, is why we did the mutual aid agreement update, which was signed on August 30th, which takes away the ability for that to happen in the future.
So this agreement's been signed? I haven't even had a chance to review it.
It's an agreement between the two fire chiefs, so...
I made it very clear that I didn't want anything to go forward until I had a chance to read that thing.
Okay.
I made that very clear to you, Mr. Chairman, and all of the commissioners should know this. This is an important issue, and so first of all, was that reviewed by legal at all?
Commissioner, I'm not sure whether it was or not. I don't recall that.
So, that being said, how do we know that this will prevent the same problem from happening in the future, if we don't even know what caused the problem to begin with?
Well...
Because you still haven't answered my original question. How far up the chain of command? Who made the order to remove that apparatus? Do we know the answer to that question? It's a simple yes or no.
Yes.
Who?
Somebody within the fire chain, the deputy fire chief.
The deputy fire chief?
Along with the battalion fire chief, who was on scene.
We know that for sure. How do we know that?
There was an investigation done within that chain of command, within the city of Wichita, and so that was what was relayed to us.
So the fire chief wasn't aware of it?
Not that I know of.
City manager wasn't, how do we know this?
No. I'm just relaying what I was told, Commissioner.
So why was that apparatus pulled?
I can get you the details of that later.
I mean, the person who was punished was...
There were people punished as part of this.
For going out there, not for bringing them back.
There were people punished for this.
Okay, I'm not going to play games, I want you to answer my questions. People were punished...
I can't give you the full answer, Commissioner, because I don't have the report in front of me.
Okay.
But what I did do was ensure that it wouldn't happen again.
Well, how are you going to do that?
Because we did that with a mutual aid agreement. Is it lock solid? I mean, we had a mutual aid agreement for the last incident. Nothing's for sure, but we did establish a mutual aid agreement between the two organizations that would keep that from happening in the future.
I don't, you've not provided me any evidence to indicate as to why that would stop. We had an apparatus that was sent out there, and then it was recalled in the middle of an active fire.
Correct.
That allowed that fire then to go on for multiple hours, because we were about five minutes away from shutting down the fire. I've heard estimates of maybe over a million dollars of additional damage as a result. I don't know, but, and then the person who went out there was reprimanded, not who brought it back, and I'm not sure we actually do know how far up the chain of command, because how many stories have you heard from the Wichita side? Haven't you heard multiple stories and from a variety of people?
Sir, I mean, I can't give you the details of the city of Wichita's, you know, investigation. What I can do, and what I did do, was ensure it wouldn't happen again by a mutual aid agreement, sitting down with Bob Layton and the two fire chiefs.
I don't believe that you have. I don't think you can say that.
Well, they could violate it. They could violate that agreement, yes.
Was anyone reprimanded for directing, ordering the fire apparatus to leave the scene while they were in an active fire?
There were multiple people, what I believe, there were multiple people disciplined for that.
For pulling the vehicle back.
Correct, and I don't have the names in front of me to tell you that right now.
Okay, I want you to follow up or rest you with me on that, and I want to know, I want to make sure that's the truth. See, I'm hearing all different sorts of stuff. There's a lot of concern out there in the public, okay? We need to have transparency and accountability on this issue. Didn't happen in my district, but I don't want it to happen in my district, and it seems, and you're a little concerned that maybe this new agreement is a way to kind of sweep things underneath the rug and not actually get the whole story, so I continue to be very concerned about that.
Well, Commissioner, sitting down with the city manager and the city fire chief, and also Chief Leek, I am, they do take it seriously. That is why we wanted the two managers got together, is to ensure it didn't happen again, and we established this mutual aid agreement that will make this that reality. You know, future, I mean, they could violate that agreement, I mean, sure, but we have gone as far as we can in terms of establishing a mutual understanding and mutual agreement signed between the two fire chiefs that I believe will keep that from happening in the future, so.
So why was the apparatus pulled?
I can give you the details of that after I get more information.
You don't know why the apparatus was pulled?
The communication between the two individuals and the city fire, I can't give you the specifics on that exactly, but from what I believe and what I understand, it was communication between the deputy fire chief and the battalion fire chief that was misunderstood, and if they had to do it all over again, it wouldn't have happened. misunderstood, and if they had to do it all over again, it wouldn't have happened.
And somehow, this new agreement addresses that miscommunication?
This takes the human element out of it, yes. It supports the incident commander, who is on scene, who makes those decisions of who displaces equipment and apparatuses. It puts it on his shoulders, whereas in the pass agreement, it wasn't written into that. The new agreement does have that written into it and makes it the incident commander's responsibility.
I think we need to have a briefing on this new agreement to include a map of the... I know there's a... I don't know what... I can't remember the term you used to call, but there's a line or an area, and it's described in that, but we need to have that mapped out.
Yeah.
We need to have... I think the commissioners need to have a briefing on the understanding of this. I am not satisfied with the result, with the answers I'm getting here as far as...
I instructed the Assistant County Manager for Public Safety, Rusty Leeds, last Thursday to come by to all the commissioners and sit down with them and show them the changes and show them what it means in terms of future protocols and agreements. So, he's going to do that.
So, when you sat down with the manager and the chief, did you ask them if they knew that that apparatus was being recalled at all?
I asked them about the circumstances behind the incident, and they were not part of that decision-making authority in terms of pulling that back. So, yes.
How do we know that?
Because based off of what they told me, Commissioner.
And there's no way that...
I believe it to be true.
Okay. You trust?
Absolutely.
Did you verify?
Well...
Or is there any way to verify?
The city manager told me, and I take him at his word.
Yeah. Well, I'm not happy that... You came to me, spoke to me a couple times, and I made it very clear that all the commissioners need to see this. We needed to review it before anything was finalized, and I don't understand why that hasn't happened. This is an important issue, and I'm not just going to sweep it under the rug and say, "Well, this contract or this agreement," which we haven't even had the opportunity to review or be briefed on, is going to solve the situation. We'll have more discussion as we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you. I agree, each one of the commissioners needs a copy of that agreement. It was just signed the 30th of August, as I recall.
Between the two fire chiefs, correct.
And I did get a copy of it either a day or two ago, not too long ago. So, I need to make sure all the commissioners also get a copy of that. A couple points, though. Commissioner Unruh and I did sit down with the mayor and the vice mayor and discuss it at length. At this point, us trying to cast blame is not as productive as making sure it doesn't happen again. And that's what I'm hoping this agreement does. The mayor and the vice mayor assured us that it would never happen again. From what I understand, the fire chiefs know, assured us that it would never happen again. And hopefully, this agreement that has been developed between the fire chiefs sets out the guidelines on who is in command at these different incidents so that it never happens again. But for us right now to try and say this person is to blame, and it's a personnel issue for Wichita, I don't think that that's as productive as making sure that we have fire protection across the county that we can trust and rely on. And that's what the agreement is supposed to do, and that's what the mayor and the vice mayor assured us is going to happen at this point. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a point. We did have a two-hour meeting yesterday on the Fire District, and a lot of information was presented. One thing that came up yesterday, which I thought was an interesting aspect of this, was the idea of jumping fires or jumping calls, I think is the term they used. The idea is that basically, they're not dispatched, and we don't necessarily track the response of those vehicles. If they respond to a fire call, they hear it on the radio, and they respond, but it's not dispatched, they don't necessarily track that information. A question would be, and I don't know the answer to this question, maybe if you know Mr. Manager, you can certainly answer it now or can answer it later, but was this a jump call? Or was this an issue where they dispatched to the fire, or were they simply just responded because they wanted to, felt like it was necessary? I don't know the answer to that question, so I'd be interested in knowing that. Second of all, I agree with some of the comments. I would like to see the agreement. And one of my questions to you and to my possible legal is, aren't we going to vote on this at some point? I would assume that these agreements, if this is a mutual aid agreement, do we not vote on those?
No, this one, this is a mutual aid agreement between the two fire chiefs. It always has been. The last one, 2012, was between the two fire chiefs, and so on and so on. These have always just been between the two. But in this case, the difference is the two managers got involved, and we made sure that it was a good agreement, that my concerns were taken into account into the agreement. Bob made sure that, from his side, that they were taken care of in the agreement, and in the end, it's a solid agreement. It's much better than we've ever had in the past.
Well, it sounds promising. I'd like to know more, so please, I'll look forward to a briefing on that. And I guess if, for some reason, the agreement isn't carried out or exercised properly, is there something in the agreement that allows us some way to resolve that?
It's a mutual aid agreement. There is no punishment clause in there.
Okay.
Because it is two different jurisdictions just agreeing to provide support. And then there's internal protocols, like the transitional zone between the black line and the boundary of the city, and how we respond in that, and what we're going to send. So, it's internal agreements. Can you violate it in the future? You can violate them now.
Okay.
And also mutual aid compacts. But it's just a promise by a jurisdiction that you're going to follow it and follow the practices and protocols listed in the agreement. And I've been assured that they're going to follow it, and I also relay that we're going to follow it.
Since we're kind of taking the opportunity to talk about other in the Fire District a little bit, I would just say, I believe there was a call last night that city and county worked together as a structure fire, and they saved a couple of lives, I understand. At least they saved one, I understand. I heard that through the grapevine this morning, so I'm very proud of them working together and providing mutual aid at a structure fire that happened last night, I understand. So, I'd like to know more about that, that particular fire. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No, I'd like to add, with firefighters, fire chiefs, the different agencies, I mean, they live to support the public. They live to provide a safe and secure environment. They are not looking for opportunities not to support and save lives. And I think in this case, in the case of the city, it was a mistake. It won't happen again, but, you know, there is not a firefighter out there or a fire chief that is not going to respond to a call when needed. And you have that commitment, and it has always been that practice, and it will continue to be that practice.
And once again, the mayor apologized to me the day of the Andale Fire, called me personally, said it was a mistake. He said it would never happen again. I have to trust the mayor at his word that it will never happen again, because it's going to make a big difference to us as the board for Fire District Number One on whether or not we spend as much as a million dollars to buy one of those pieces of equipment ourselves. And at this point, it does not make sense to me to spend a million dollars to buy one of those when we have four of them sitting in Wichita, and we have a mutual aid agreement that was recently signed that says that they will support us if we need it. So, I feel confident that we will get the support that we need. I know that they... From the apology that I received from the mayor, and they truly will not allow this to happen again. I feel confident. Commissioner Ranza?
So, let's clarify. You can get me the names of people who were... I mean, I know one of them, but you can find out who was reprimanded and why. I can get that.
Right.
Okay. This... You can't fix a problem unless you... I mean, you can't say we're going to fix a problem unless we know what the problem is to begin with. I'm talking about transparency, talking about accountability. There's a lot of distrust in the community out there surrounding this issue, and I haven't been able to give... People ask me, I can't give them solid questions. There's just not a lot of trust there in what happened with respect to the Wichita Fire Department. I don't want that same distrust to bleed over to our Fire District and to this commission. If we give the appearance that we're just going to sweep this underneath the rug, that's what's going to happen. The guy who went and provided, took the truck out there to help us put that fire out, was reprimanded after you got the assurance that it would never happen again. Well, why would you reprimand somebody for going out there in the first place if you're going to say in the future, "We'll never..." You know, "We'll let it happen, and then this won't happen again." It doesn't make sense. I can't help but think there's just more to the story because it just doesn't make sense, all right? And like I said, I got questioned about it last night at a Farm Bureau forum. And so, I am troubled by just kind of how this is going. I kind of get a sense we're just going to try to sweep this underneath the rug, and that's not going to help our image. It's not going to help the Wichita Fire Department, it's not going to help the Fire District. Okay? I'll look forward to getting the information and having some more detailed discussions as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't want to prolong this discussion, but it did happen in my district, and I truly want to make sure that my district is protected as well as all the districts in Sedgwick County. But I have to believe the mayor and the vice mayor that it's not going to happen again, and that's what I believe.
And I mean, by a significant... You know, doing a mutual aid agreement and signing it, and the managers working towards making sure that it doesn't have... Is not sweeping it under the rug. We have gone above and beyond. There was nobody on the day of this incident that was madder than me. You look at Tom's, Rusty, and the chief's phone, their phones were burned up by my remarks about what I thought about what happened on that day. So, you know, of anybody, I was committed to making sure that this didn't happen again. And for me, that mutual aid agreement is the means in which for us to have an agreement to make sure the human error is taken out of it, and the city manager was committed to that as well as the fire chief. And so, that is not, to me, sweeping it under the rug.
Well, you bring...
Commissioner Ranza?
Bring up a good point about your phone messages and texts and stuff. Maybe that would be helpful to see your phone messages and texts. Maybe it'd be helpful to see the phone messages and texts of a variety of people over on the Wichita side as well. That could shut down a lot of this discussion and a lot of things that are going on behind the scenes of, you know, who heard what, and who knew what, and who really made the decision. If you want transparency, it's just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just feel compelled to make a comment, and that is that I think we all recognize that this was an egregious error, that it cost property and created expenses, and it's the wrong way to do business. I think it's been acknowledged by the city. I think they have a personnel issue that, according to all personnel policies, are much of that is kept private, and they have indicated it's a personnel issue, and they don't want to... They're not going to discuss that any further. I think that the acknowledgement that we need to make a change, we've worked to set the framework to effect that change is good. It's satisfying to me. And I think the thing we need to keep in mind as we consider to talk about this is that Wichita is our partner in providing safety and fire safety around here. We help them, they help us, and we need to go together as good working partners. And so, this mutual aid agreement, I think, is a good step to do that. And if we're going to have conversation about consolidation, I think that we need to posture ourselves in such a way that we want to go forward on a positive note, and rather than try to continue to talk about a past incident, and I realize that it was very bad, and that we had quite a reaction to it when it happened, but now's the time to figure out a platform to go forward and be good partners for the fire safety of our citizens. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else need to come for the Board of Fire District Number One? It's probably the longest board meeting we've had since I've been on the commission for the Fire District. Seeing nothing, we're adjourned.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.